Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, August 3rd meeting of the Oxford Board of Selectmen. First item on our agenda is introduction of Mike Lucas, who is the superintendent of schools. Mike, if you want to come forward.
Sure. Thank you for having me. Sit here?
Yep.
Is that okay?
Yep, that's terrific. Welcome.
Thank you for inviting me. I appreciate it. It's an honor to be here. It's an honor to lead the Oxford Public Schools. I started on July 1st. It's been a great month so far. Spent most of my time so far. We've hired a bunch of new folks as part of our Recovery and Acceleration Plan for learning with some grants that we received. We're very excited about the new people we're bringing to Oxford and our new hires. And I've also interviewed over 40 stakeholders from our school community and from town and staff and faculty, trying to learn about the culture here at Oxford. What are the things we do really, really well? And what are our current successes? And where are there opportunities for improvement? As well as how I can help our educators with their teaching and their learning of our students. And everything comes back to the kids. It's all about the kids and we have to focus on what is best for them and how we can provide the best education possible. And then those best opportunities after graduation. So I look forward to working with you guys over the next few years. I plan on being here for several years to work on that and stabilize our leadership. We've got a great working relationship with the school committee already. And we've got some good things started this summer already before school even opened. So we'll be meeting in August with our administration teams and looking at leadership for the fall and to open schools and have a very successful school year. I would extend my invitation. I sent it out to all of our faculty and staff. Everybody's welcome to meet with me for a half hour, an hour to talk about Oxford, the schools, the history, whatever they want to share. I've had some great conversation with folks. I'd extend that to you guys, to your body, and to anybody in town who wants to come in and talk about the Oxford Public Schools and how we can make it the best schools possible for our kids. So if anybody's interested, I'd love to extend that invitation tonight and look forward to sitting down with you, having a cup of coffee and talking about it. In the end, I think we all want the same thing for our kids. We want them to have a great education and a great future. If there's anything I can do for that, please let me know. I'd love to have a conversation. Already had different folks, townspeople come see me, different businesses been in touch with. It's been great conversations, but I'd love to have more. So, and I'm trying to get as many of those in in August before the school doors open and it gets a lot busier. So, I open an invitation. And if you guys have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer those.
Thank you. Board members, any questions, comments?
Welcome on board. Looking forward to working with you.
I was a history teacher, so I could talk forever. So, you're gonna have to cut me off at some point.
Okay.
But if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them. Thank you for the welcome. It was really nice of you guys to invite me tonight. I do appreciate it.
No. It's nice to see a face with a name, you know?
Yes.
So, and I welcome you also. And I think the past few years, we've had a very good rapport, the board and the school committee.
Yes.
The town manager is really, and the past superintendent, you know, they really clicked.
Yes.
And in years past, Evan on the board for a while, we didn't have that relationship, you know? But I want to say that the past couple of years, two, three years, it was great. And I hope we can continue that because...
I hope so too. That's what I hope to do, is keep collaborating with you all. Absolutely.
You know, the whole budget process went, has been going well the past few years. And, you know, and that's an important thing.
It is.
You're a big part of the town, so...
We're all on the same team, right?
Yes, that's it. That's it.
So, we want what's best for our kids.
And that's important for people to know.
It is.
You know, that, you know, we're all here to make Oxford a better place. So...
Very good.
Yes.
Um, just also want to, you know, echo a welcome aboard. Where are you coming from? Like, you said history teacher, but prior to this position, where were you?
I was the principal at Tantasca Regional High School for the past 12 years. Before that, I taught history in the high school for eight years and at the middle school for nine years before that. I've coached many sports, many seasons, did student council, things like that. So I wore many different hats while I was at Tantasca. I know Oxford well. I went to Doherty High School in Worcester. I grew up in Worcester. So I'm very familiar with it, very familiar coaching in the Swickel League. And our student council did a lot of different things with the Oxford Student Council for several years. So, very familiar with Oxford and getting to know the community better.
Cool. Awesome. And then what's the school year looking like right now in regards to COVID? Are the students, 100% students coming back to school at this point?
Yes. 100% students coming back to school. We're hoping for as normal year as possible. The state has, and the Department of Education has strongly recommended that kids wear masks indoors if they have not been vaccinated. And we shared that with our school community in an email we sent out as an update. Who knows? It could change week to week. It did during COVID over the past year and a half. But right now, we're planning on everybody coming to school on opening day. That's our plan. That's our hope.
Yeah, that's awesome. Are you guys preparing anything just in case with this whole new Delta variant? And things kind of going the wrong direction unfortunately?
You're putting me on the spot.
I just know these questions get asked.
Oh no, absolutely. Absolutely. Yeah, we will have backup plans ready. I've heard from a lot of community members that our schools did a wonderful job during COVID and that many parents have felt their kids received a very good education under very difficult circumstances during COVID, both at home, hybrid, in school and out of school, which is very challenging. And that's something Oxford should be very proud of. So we will have similar backup plans. We have our wonderful nurses led by Amy Garnett, and they're very much on top of everything in COVID procedures. I met actually with Amy again today, yesterday. But I think we'll have a good plan and be ready to go. We feel very confident in that. But we will have backup plans. But again, our hope is every kid's in school five days a week. The commissioner did say in his recent announcement, the plan is to clarify that everybody's expected to be open for school five days a week for all children.
That's awesome.
So then they went into a little thing about masks and recommendations, stuff like that. But it was quite clear that the expectation is public schools in Massachusetts will be opening for all children every day. That's the plan. But as you said, we will have backup plans if we need them.
Awesome.
So...
Well, thank you and welcome.
Thank you. Good questions.
All right. Well, we thank you very much for coming in this evening.
Absolutely. Thank you for having me.
Yes.
All right, thanks guys.
Look forward to working with you.
Absolutely.
Great. Okay, next item on our agenda is approval of the minutes for September 22nd in 2020 and July 20th, 2021.
I would make a motion that the board approve the meeting minutes from September 22nd, 2020 and July 20th, 2021, meetings as written. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions? Call for vote.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes for the 22nd? I don't know if I can abstain from the 20th, but I'll just say yes.
Do you want me to separate the motion?
Yeah, why don't we separate it?
All right. I'll amend my motion to be to approve the minutes from September 22nd, 2020, as written. Second.
Now a call for vote.
Yes.
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 And I'll vote yes. It's for an affirmative, one absent, those minutes are approved.
I would make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from July 20th, 2021, as written. Second.
And I'll call for a vote on those minutes.
Yes.
Yes.
Abstain.
A vote yes. That's three in affirmative, one absent, one abstention. They are approved. Thank you very much. Next item is election worker appointments. So, these are the appointments. Does anyone have an issue if I just go right through these before I hear a motion? Great. All right. These are the people that we would like to see working as election workers. We have Patricia Ocker of 85 Milbury Road, Cynthia Bathgate of 30-1 Thea Pond Drive, Cynthia E. Brennan of 8 Nottingham Road, Martha Katie of 242 Main Street, Betty Carlson of 38 Clarabotten Road, Diane T. Cahill of 16 Charlton Street, Julie Krantz of 23 Thea Pond Drive, number three, Wanda DiBescali for Clarence Drive, Nancy Elliott, 7 Cold Drive, Carol Figress, 104 Main Street, Patty Pat Fredella, 17D Liberty Lane, Donna Fisher, 45 Sacreappare Road, Claudette Flores, 370 Main Street, Barbara Gannett, 9 Bacon Street, Susan Gustafson, 12 Mayfield Circle, Stacy Hamm, 12 Turcalla Road, Robert Krasinski, 116 Charlton Street, Nancy Mackey, 19 Daniel Drive.
17 Daniel Drive.
Oh, I'm sorry. 17 Daniel Drive. Thank you. Joan Maywalt, 6 Lambert Circle, Deborah McDonald, 4 Park Street, Carolyn Merson, 23 Wheelock Street, apartment E01, Joan Nelson, 155 Charlton Street, Beverly Plant, 14 Fearlon Ave. Kathleen Purcell, 117 Old Webster Road, Mary Jane Rassikot, 4 Westview Drive, Martha Ralt, 94 Fort Hill Road, Jeannie Ross, 17 Nottingham Road, Cynthia Sad, 4 Old Worcester Road, Earl Skiin, 8 Bartlett Street, Joanne Summers, 14 Burbank Street, Carol Spooner, 127 Milbury Road, Mary Stacy, 142 F Charlton Street, Megan Zerskala, 53 Wheelock Street, Mary Stevens, 77 Merriam District, Erin Sullivan, 17 Chestnut Hill Road, William Sullivan, 17 Chestnut Hill Road, Mary Thibodeau, 8 Hillcrest Drive, Sheila Thomas, 338 Main Street, Linda Vigent, 9 Park Street, Claire Wilson, 3 Howe Ave and Rose Wing, 23 Wheelock Street, apartment C1. I then entertain a motion to approve those as election workers.
I make a motion that the board appoint the election workers as read by Chairman Lamarche for a term to expire on August 15th, 2022. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Any comments? Call for a vote.
Yes.
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 And I'll vote yes. That's for an affirmative, one absent. They are approved and we thank them very much for their service. All right, next item is a appointment of the Ochsana Housing Authority Tenant Board Member. This is the Huguenot Tenant Association along with the Oxford Housing Authority Director Barry Nason would like the Board of Selectmen to consider the appointment of Patricia Lee Fredella as a tenant board member of the Oxford Housing Authority. Ms. Fredella is a current Oxford Housing Authority Board Member. This appointment would change her from a regular board member to the tenant board member. And information can be obtained from our clerk, Michelle Jenkins. And this is a board selectman appointment. So, board members, I then entertain a motion.
I make a motion that the board appoint Patricia Lee Fredella of 17 Liberty Lane Apartment D Oxford, Mass. As the tenant board member of the Oxford Housing Authority for a term of one year expiring at annual town election 2022. Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve. Any comments? Not hearing none. I'll call for a vote.
Yes.
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 And I'll vote yes. For an affirmative, one absent. Thank you very much. Now we have a, next item on our agenda is a joint appointment with the Oxford Housing Authority fill the vacant seat, which is a one-year term. In the association, the Huguenot Tenant Association along with the Oxford Housing Authority Director Barry Nason asked the Board of Selectmen to consider the appointment of Arsenio Luce of 13 Liberty Lane Apartment C Oxford, Mass. 1540 as a member of the Housing Authority for a one-year term. Mr. Luce will fill the term of Arthur Cowton Deggan, who resigned May 25th, 2021. And information can be obtained from our clerk, Michelle Jenkins. And this is a joint appointment. Before we make a motion, I would ask the Oxford Housing Authority Board how they voted. If one of you could just, yeah, just, if you don't mind. So the people at home can hear your lovely voice.
Thank you. My name is Karen Erickson. I'm chairman of the board at the Oxford Housing Authority. And we, as a board of commissioners, have all agreed that Arsenio Luce would be a good board member and we voted for the positive.
Very good. Thank you very much. Now, board members, I'll entertain a motion.
I'd make a motion that the board appoint Arsenio Suzu Luce of 13 Liberty Lane Apartment C Oxford, Mass. As a member of the Housing Authority for a term of one year expiring at annual town election 2022. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Comments? Call for a vote.
Yes.
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 And I'll vote yes. For an affirmative, one absent is approved. Thank you very much for coming tonight too. Nice to see you.
Thank you for having us. Thank you.
All right. Next item on our agenda is setting the date for the special town meeting and the opening of the town warrant for the special town meeting. The town moderator and finance director have concurred with this date of the meeting for October 6th, 2021 at 7:00 PM. And the school department has indicated the high school is available. So I then entertain a motion to set that date for the annual town meeting.
I'd make a motion that the board set the date of the annual town meeting to October 6th, 2021 at 7:00 PM. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Comments? Not hearing none. Call for a vote.
Yes.
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 And I'll vote yes. For an affirmative, one absent. That is our date for our special town meeting. By general law, the closing date of the special town meeting warrant is at the discretion of this board. But the warrant must be posted by September 22nd, 2021. If the town meeting is to be held on October 6th, which it is, so I then entertain a motion.
Um, before I make a motion, can, I know it says here that the recommended one is September 1st.
Okay.
Can we discuss first or do you want me to make a motion or, and then discuss?
Sure. Let's discuss. Yeah, sounds good. That sounds easier.
Right. I just, I, given that it's going to open on the 4th, I think we should have it open for a month. And I was just looking at the calendar. The 4th of September falls on a Saturday during Labor Day weekend. So I would be more comfortable going Tuesday or Wednesday with it just to give that full month for people to submit. Because I just, I feel like we're so close to the town meeting and where we have to meet certain... I understand we have to meet certain deadlines, but I want people that want to submit articles to have enough time. And I feel like a month would be more appropriate than less than a month.
You're gonna close it on the 7th?
I would prefer to close it on the 7th or the 8th as opposed to the 1st. The 7th is the Tuesday after Labor Day, it looks like, and the 8th is the Wednesday. So...
Right. And that keeps us in our guidelines. So that's fine with me. I don't know about the rest of the board.
Okay.
Okay.
So then I would make a motion that the board open the town warrant for the special town meeting on August 4th, 2021 and set the date for closing of the town warrant for September 8th, 2021. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any more comments? Call for a vote?
Yes.
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 And I'll vote yes. That's for an affirmative, one absent. Then we will open the town warrant on the 4th and close it on September 8th. Very good. Excellent. Good point. All right. Next item is a special municipal employee designation requested by September Forbes for, to be a school committee member. We have all received all sorts of information on this. We've received her disclosure and, I don't know, it's up to the board. What would you like to do? I then entertain a motion. We've heard from town council.
I would... I looked through it. I don't have a problem with it so much. I would make a motion that we would designate September Forbes a special municipal employee.
Yes.
It has to be the whole school committee designated, not just one person.
We're voting for the whole school committee to be special municipal employees? Wow, I thought it was just her.
We would have to, we'd have to do the whole school committee and then do a, what was it in here? The exemption specifically for her afterwards. So we basically have to do two motions if we're on board.
Wow, I missed that completely because I didn't, personally, I didn't see that. I thought it was just her. That we, that why we have... Oh, here she is. Great.
How are you? Thank you for having me here tonight. If I can just clarify, I am currently a school committee member. And what I would be looking for is an exemption. According to the Ethics Committee of Massachusetts and the Oxford Town List from 2006, the school committee is considered special municipal employee. However, I know that you need to vote on that. So I was here looking for the exemption to have two municipal agency, the town of Oxford positions, and they both happen to be for the school department. I am currently on the school committee and what I'm looking for is to accept a part-time position as the director of the EduCare program, which is the before and after school program in the town. So, this came about because that's been my career for 38 years. I've been in the early childhood and before and after school care. And with the resignation of our EduCare Coordinator, Nick Packard, I knew the job was coming available. I wasn't really sure any details of that job. And it was posted on School Spring, which is how public schools put out information on jobs available. I applied. I interviewed with Tara Traynor, who is not someone that I had previously known or been familiar with. She's new to the district. And I was found to be the best candidate for that position and was recommended to the superintendent. However, I knew that there was probably some potential conflict or appearance of a conflict. So I spoke with the Ethics Commission and got all kinds of information and hopefully have come forward with all the proper documentation that you need. And I'm happy to answer any questions. I do feel that I could be fair and impartial. The EduCare program is self-funded, although it does fall under the school department. I don't know in my four and a half years on the school committee that we've ever had any situation that we've had to vote on or look at for the EduCare program. And if something came about, I would certainly abstain from discussion and vote in anything EduCare related. As I said, I haven't encountered anything thus far, but you never know.
Okay. Well, in that case, I would make a motion to designate school committee members as special municipal employees. Second. I figured I'd separate them in case anybody had a problem with the first part.
Okay. Cool.
Sorry.
No problem. All right. We have a motion and a second to designate school committee members as special municipal employees, right?
Yes.
I do just have one question in regards to that. If any other school committee member were to apply for a position at the school, they would still have to come to us in the future for the Section 20C exemption, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure that was clear.
Right. Okay. Any other? Good. Call for a vote.
Yes.
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 And I'll vote yes. That's for an affirmative, one absent. We've set them as special municipal employees. Continue, please.
And now I would make a motion to approve the exemption from Section 20C for September Forbes Director of the EduCare Program. Second.
Great. So we have a motion and a second to exempt September Forbes from the 23...
20C.
Exemption, 20C, in case I said that wrong. All right. I'll call for a vote.
Yes.
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 And I'll vote yes. That's for an affirmative, one absent. Thank you so much for coming and clarifying because I missed that.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Okay. Next item on our agenda is Hillcrest Worship Center Incorporated would like to have a Fun Fest day. So Dan Fontaine from the church has applied for a general license at the church. Would like to hold an event to give back to the community. The event is free to the public and will showcase food, games, prizes, bounce house, water slides, paints, painting, raffles and giveaways. The town clerk and the board of health have been contacted for permitting, which may be required. The board of health will vote on this food permit requirement on their August 9th meeting. And we have all been given a flyer of it and I would entertain a motion from the board.
I'd make a motion that the board approve the general license request for Hillcrest Worship Center doing business as Hillcrest Church to hold a community event referred to as Fun Fest, August 14th, 2021, subject to approval for any permitting required by the board of health and/or the town clerk and to waive the fee for this license pursuant to the board's policy number 602. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Any more comments? And I call for a vote.
Yes.
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 And I'll vote yes. For an affirmative, one absent. They are approved. Good luck. Hope it's a fun day and I hope it's not raining. We've had enough of that this year, haven't we? All right. Next item on our agenda is South Central Mass Partnership for Public Health Intermunicipal Agreement. CMRPC received a grant for the Central Mass Partnership for Public Health Intermunicipal Agreement. The municipalities' participation are Auburn, Brimfield, Dudley, Oxford, Southbridge and Webster. With this grant, a shared community health coordinator and regional health inspector will be hired. Webster will serve as the host agent. Participation in this partnership is a zero cost to the town. In order to move forward with the participation, both the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Health must vote to enter into the intermunicipal agreement. Board of Health will meet on August 2nd to vote on the IMA. Welcome.
Thank you for having me.
Yes.
My name's David Escobar. I'm the vice chair of the Oxford Board of Health. And I'm here to answer any questions you have about this agreement. It is basically an agreement to establish a partnership for public health between the six towns and to, it is the result of a grant that was received by the town of Webster to create this regional partnership and will provide Oxford access to inspection services of all varieties in the, as an augmentation to our current inspection resources. As you said, our obligation, this is fully funded for the next three years by the grant. So there's no, there's no cost to the town of Oxford. The only obligation that we have is to appoint a member to the oversight board from the board of health and an alternate and to participate in their budgeting process and oversight of their employees. There are two employees scheduled to be hired for this partnership. One is a public health coordinator. Work on education campaigns and community information. And the other is a regional health inspector who will be available for inspections ranging from, basically covering all of the inspection services that Board of Health is now responsible for, from food service, housing, tanning, tobacco, body art, animals, private drinking water wells and septic systems. So it's a wide range of services that we'll be able to tap into if we need to augment our own services. It's free of charge. The Board of Health has voted and agreed and will participate with your, with your agreement. Do you have any questions?
Good. Thank you, David. Board members, questions?
You said the Board of Health voted in favor of it last night?
Yes. Yes.
And how, how exactly would we utilize those inspection services? Would we, like, would Oxford Board of Health put out a request?
Yes.
And then kind of work hand in hand together?
Yeah. So if we had an occasion, so we've had some in the last year or so, we've had inspectors retire, we've had gaps in our coverage where we were scrambling to find an inspector to handle our needs. This would cover things like that if we had a, an inspector who was ill or hit the lottery and went on extended vacation. It would also, if we had, if we had a series of inspections that needed to be done in a short amount of time, we could, we could tap into this resource to augment our own service capabilities.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Go.
But it looks like to me when I was reading it that they still need to hire the people, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
So it's gonna take a little bit of time to get them up?
It'll take a little bit of time to get those people. I think they have people in mind for the positions. Um, but, uh, yeah, they won't be able to hire it until, until it's fully formed. And in order for us to participate, it needs a, a vote from the Board of Health and, and a vote from, from the town selectmen.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, entertain a motion.
I make a motion that the board vote to enter into the intermunicipal agreement for local public health services with the town of Webster in its capacity as host agent of the South Central Massachusetts Partnership for Public Health.
Second.
A motion and a second. Do we have any comments? Call for a vote.
Yes.
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 And I'll vote yes. Four in affirmative, one absent. We approve all sorts. Very good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming and clarifying. Okay, next item on our agenda is proclamation for Purple Heart Day. I'll read the proclamation. Whereas the people of the town of Oxford, Mass. have great admiration and the utmost gratitude for all the men and women who have selfishly served their country and this community and the armed forces. And whereas veterans have paid a high price for freedom by leaving their families and communities and placing themselves in arms' way for the good of all. And whereas the contributions and sacrifices of the men and women from Oxford who serve in the armed forces have been vital in maintaining the freedom and way of life enjoyed by our citizens. And whereas many men and women in uniform have given their lives while serving in the armed forces. And whereas our community has a proud tradition of military service and many of our citizens have earned the Purple Heart Medal as a result of being wounded while engaged in combat with an enemy force, which is construed as a singularly meritorious act of essential service. Therefore, be it resolved that we, the Oxford Board of Selectmen, do hereby proclaim August 7th, 2021, Purple Heart Day in the town of Oxford, Mass. Honoring the service and sacrifice of our nation and our townsman and woman in uniform that were wounded or killed by the enemy while serving to protect the freedom enjoyed by all Americans. And I would entertain, entertain a motion to proclaim that date.
I make a motion to proclaim August 7th, 2021 as Purple Heart Day in the town of Oxford.
Second.
Have a motion and a second? Comments? Call for vote.
Yes.
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 And I'll vote yes. Four in affirmative, one absent. We very proudly proclaim that Purple Heart Day. Thank you. Well, next item is our town manager's report. Guess I'm up for this. All right. I believe, uh, we have a new, uh, building commissioner. Patrick, you want to come forward and so we can, uh, put a face with that wonderful name? The manager would like us, uh, would like to announce the recent appointment of Patrick Dogren as the town of Oxford's first full-time building commissioner. This has been a strategic management staffing goal, which has been supported by the Finance Committee and townspeople. Commissioner Dogren comes to Oxford with solid experience as the former assistant commissioner in the city of Marlboro for six years. He's certified as a commissioner in Massachusetts. As an office manager, he managed the day-to-day operation of a large department with the staff of seven in Marlboro and had served interim as commissioner several times. He has an extensive commercial building background and has served in the United States Army Reserve. Welcome.
Thank you for having me.
You're most welcome. Um, did I get it all?
You did. You did. Thank you. Thank you. It's a pleasure, pleasure being here tonight. Thank you.
And, well, we welcome you. Uh, you know, it's, it's great. Uh, it's great to have a, of, an actual full-time commissioner too. So, uh, that's a kind of step up from a building inspector, I guess, correct? So.
Many more tests.
Yeah.
Many more tests to take. A lot of time.
Oh, well, we welcome you. Board members, comments?
Welcome.
Welcome. Welcome.
That was gonna be my question actually is, would you mind, like, briefly describing, um, your role as building commissioner, um, and what that all necessarily entails?
Sure, as the building commissioner in any tower or municipality city, um, our, our first, I guess our first priority is public safety. Uh, if it's inspecting buildings or, or, um, zoning determinations, allowing businesses to go in certain areas or, or a residential house to be built, that's one of our primary, primary responsibilities is the public safety. Zoning is, has its own challenges. Every town and cities have their own different, uh, zoning, I guess bylaws if you want to call them that. But in a nutshell, our, our main goal is public safety. Keep the public, the residents, um, even, even town employees safe.
Um, and you do that working hand in hand with the, the different inspector, the building inspector, the plumbing, wiring, all of, all of that? Are, are you kind of oversight over them?
Correct. Correct. Yeah, we are, we are, we are, um, I, I guess the department head of all of those other disciplines here in the, in the town.
Awesome. Cool. Well, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Very good. Well, thank you very much for coming forward this evening and, uh, introducing yourself, as I said, to our superintendent. It's always nice to see a face with a, a name, you know, so. Thank you again and we wish you luck.
All right, great.
All right, thanks, Patrick. All right, in an effort to improve water quality, please be advised, uh, McKinstry Pond will be chemically treated with aquatic herbicide to control nuisance aquatic vegetative growth. The treatment is scheduled for Thursday, August 5th. The pond will be closed to swimming, boating, and fishing until Friday, August 6th. Temporary signs will be posted regarding the closure and application of herbicide. If rain, the schedule will be adjusted out to the next day. As, uh, as you know, the town has received two community compact grants totaling $40,000 to formally develop a financial.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Hi, I, I, I'm Oxford but with no image. I don't know if you can hear me. It's town manager Jen Callahan here.
We can hear you. Welcome back.
Okay, I hope you can hear me. I can't hear you. I can hear you. I could hear you reading my report, which I am very grateful for you to do, um, as I've been having some technical difficulties. Um, if you can hear me, put your thumbs up, uh, because, uh, all right, good. Good, well, thank you. Um, I wanted to continue with, uh, my report, uh, from, uh, remote, uh, access. And I see that you had already started with the GFOA budget, uh, item. I am very, very pleased to say, after more than almost a year and a half, uh, with some delays, uh, relative to, uh, COVID, that, uh, after receiving two community compact grants totaling $40,000, one was to produce a financial management operations policy. And the second piece was to create a comprehensive budget document, which will be what we will be putting together, um, each year annually, um, going forward. Uh, we had already, you know, completed the manual, but we hadn't completed the budget document. And we've been working with the Collins Center. I'm very proud to say that today, um, and, uh, through the final tweaking of yesterday, we did submit it, uh, for review to the Government Finance Officers Association, uh, for distinguished, uh, budget presentation award. And we're hoping, based on what we have put together, that it's going to be, uh, looked at favorably. Um, it will be linked to our website and it will be reviewed by the GF, um, O A, uh, Association. And, um, I'm looking forward to it, but I do want to give, um, credit to every single department head, uh, who worked very, um, hard on this, uh, developed, uh, very sound budget goals and objectives, which we do in management and administration. Uh, we try to adhere to those and we try to meet those. And, um, I'm very pleased to say, uh, that we've been able to do that. And when I say it's a comprehensive document, uh, you will see, um, just how, um, comprehensive it is if you go on our website where it will, um, be linked. Uh, the next item is just to let the board know that, uh, once again, we are trying to continue a very rapid, uh, and adhere to a, a rapid, uh, schedule for not only closing our year end, but also getting our fiscal year audits done. Uh, during the week of July 12th, we had the firm of Rosselli and Clark actually come, um, to town hall to set up what they consider to be, um, transactional testing as a preliminary, uh, setup for the upcoming, uh, fiscal audit for this past year. And that, uh, once again, um, we are going to probably meet a very robust schedule in which if anybody has paid attention to Division of Local Services, um, they've been talking and highlighting communities that have actually, um, submitted their closeouts and their, um, year ends, uh, to be able to get their, uh, communities ready and set for the next budget cycle. And we are going to, once again, be way ahead of where, um, our community has been in the past. And a lot of credit goes, um, both to our accounting division and our finance, um, uh, director. But in reality, it is a complete team effort because we can't get to that point in which, um, we are submitting to get our tax recap and to be able to find out what we'll have for certified free cash. But based on the trajectory we have done, I anticipate that will be done early fall and we'll have an excellent idea of, once again, where we're going to be, um, budgetarily going forward in the next year. Uh, the next item is the MVP grant. Um, I wanted to bring this before the board because we have heard that they are about to make this announcement. And, um, the announcement, uh, we believe, uh, for the MVP, uh, which is Municipal Vulner- Vulnerable Preparedness Grant, uh, proposal that we've put forward. Um, I've announced, uh, Tony Sousa and also, um, Jared Duval, who I can't see, um, if they're there, to be able to, uh, inform the board of why we're doing this and why this is, um, really an essential step, uh, to getting to the next level, uh, for funding. And, uh, if, if all things play out and our proposal is accepted, I think that we have an awesome possibility of bringing in, you know, a very sizable grant, uh, for, for next year. But, um, I'll let both of these, there they are, fine gentlemen, speak to you about the expertise they put into this grant, which has been a town manager goal, um, since I came here and we weren't, not able to do it, um, due to short staffing when I first arrived with Sean Duval. Um, but Jared Duval has teamed up with, um, our, uh, town planner and, um, I'll let them take it away. Take it away, gentlemen.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Manager Callahan, and good evening, um, Mr. Chairman and, and members of the board. Um, so if we do get the funding, we'll be working with, um, CMRPC. And as part of the, the MVP, Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Program, it was, uh, created by, um, Governor Baker several years ago to allow cities and towns to, to prepare for climate change, uh, to create more resiliency in our infrastructure, to evaluate and enhance our policies, let's say, procedures and so on. As part of the process, um, the MVP program requires communities to attain the MVP designation. And in order to receive that designation, and when you receive that designation, it's tied to additional dollars for infrastructure and, and other purposes. But, um, where we are at this stage, should we get the grant funding, um, we are to, in order to get that designation, we are to create a, a plan. And an MVP, uh, preparedness plan, which is aligned. There's a series of guidelines that we are to, to abide by with the, with the state. And just the really broad overview of the mechanics, um, with CMRPC. Again, should we get the funding, working with them, um, and staff, who would analyze existing conditions, um, provide information with respect to, uh, trends as it relates to, to climate, as it relates to, you know, um, stormwater, for example, um, snowstorms, ice storms, the patterns, the climate patterns that have occurred in, in our community and in the region. And, um, through that process, uh, meet also, there's a series built into this of listening tours with the community, up to five. Um, and with you folks as well, be part of, as our stakeholders in this, um, listening tour to develop this plan and this priority plan from, again, from policy to, to infrastructure. Well, entire process, uh, could take up to 12 months or so. Um, but again, the goal here is to get the grant number one. Get the designation number two and ultimately number three to, to advance for the action grant. So just wanted to provide some background from, at least from the planning end. Now, if I may, I'll turn it over to Jared.
Yeah, tha- thank you, Tony. So, uh, Tony gave a nice overview there of really the first step in this process, which is what we're undergoing now. And, you know, we're, we're hopeful our application will look favorably for this planning level grant. Um, that'll help us earn the MVP designation. Um, and from there, that opens up the door to some additional funding for action level grant funding. Um, and with that, what we can do is, y- you're really looking at, um, projects that can help us build resilience to climate change, um, be able to absorb those changes essentially. Um, it could be due to, you know, extreme weather, inland flooding, um, severe heat, just to name a few, those sorts of, of climate change impacts. Um, some projects that are, you know, typical in, from a DPW perspective, certainly, is we're looking at stormwater infrastructure, um, trying to implement green, um, infrastructure technologies and, um, strategies. Um, I've just got some, some general examples. So essentially with the action level grant, um, there's, there's no cap on grant funding from what we can tell. We've, I've researched some surrounding towns and, uh, action level grants ranging anywhere from $25,000 upwards to a million dollars in, in neighboring Milbury, uh, where they received, uh, an action level grant to do some green infrastructure, stormwater system improvements. Um, the town needs to match 25% of the total project cost, so there is a match there when it comes time. Um, but projects, again, they can range anywhere from green infrastructure type strategies. Those are looked at very favorably when it comes time to applying. Um, but could be just increasing the capacity of a traditional stormwater system. Um, it could be developing, you know, a riverfront park, um, you know, to, to address any inland flooding or, or, I wouldn't call that coastal flooding, but, um, culvert replacement projects, which we have plenty on our list, um, would fall under this, this program. Um, it could be, uh, a vulnerability assessment pertaining to, uh, emergency power for any town building or all of our town buildings, uh, or green power, um, technologies that we could implement potentially. Um, dam removal projects, carbon planning assessments, all of these things fall within, um, this, this program in its purview. So, um, certainly opens the door, uh, for some projects. You know, I think of it as even trying to supplement some of our maybe larger roadway improvement projects that we need to do. We know we need to increase capacity for stormwater. You know, we could potentially tap in here. So that's, that's just a general overview of the, you know, the action grant side of it. Um, and, and, and hopefully we, you know, we're, we're poised and, and earn that designation where we can apply as early as next spring for that, for those monies.
And, and, and if I may, to, I just reminded, um, again, it opens up an opportunity, a funding source that we've never had an opportunity before. Um, so again, fingers crossed that we, we continue to move forward, get the grant, get the designation. Um, in Southern Westwood County, I think it's left to two or three communities and, um, uh, to receive the, the MVP designation. So it's really, really important and it's proven to be, you know, an effective tool to, to supplement, uh, funding for various projects.
Great. Good. Wish you luck.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks for your hard work. Hey, Iran.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, they do a lot of hard work and, uh, we've got a lot of great, um, things to share with the community as we go forward. And I just thought, um, when people talk about acronyms like MVP, it requires multiple iterations of explanation to understand what that all means. So thank you, uh, gentlemen, for doing that, uh, for this evening. Uh, the next item is, uh, fire prevention. I, I wanted to take a moment. Um, we do a lot of great things in our fire department, um, and I know the board is well aware of that. Um, more than a year ago, I want to say almost a year and a half ago, when our fire chief first came on board, he talked about wanting to implement, um, some fire prevention programs that he had already had in place in, um, other communities that, um, he had worked. And, um, this next particular subject matter, uh, for a 911 address sign project was brought up to me more than a year ago. Um, we got, in the middle of the pandemic, it got a little bit stalled because all of our efforts was really on trying to meet the needs of, of the surges that we had and to protect firefighters and EMS work as, as much as possible. So I'm gonna ask, uh, Deputy Chief, um, Kencelis to come forward and talk about this, uh, particular initiative. I know, uh, some of you are aware that, uh, you're seeing little red signs pop up, including, um, at my house, uh, to, to, uh, actually enhance our ability to keep our public safe. So, uh, deputy, if you could take this over and talk about your role, that would be terrific.
Thank you, ma'am, town manager.
Thank you, Madam Town Manager. Good evening. So over a year ago, as the Town Manager was saying, Chief McDowell and I sat down, and this is one of the programs that I wanted to initiate. With COVID and everything, it got pushed back. And the opening of Station Two kind of pushed it even further back. We're at a point now where we were comfortable, where we thought we could pull it off and pull it off properly. Basically, what we're doing, and again, you can see, they're reflective signs, reflective numbers on them. You can get them with just the sign, and we attach them to the mailboxes or to a fence post. Or you can get them with the posts, and then we put them in the front yard, either at the end of the driveway or where they're visible from the street. One of the first things I did was I went and met with Home Depot, and we were able to create a collaboration with Home Depot. Home Depot has donated to, up till today, the first one hundred posts. So we did not have to purchase the posts. They, they've donated all of them. They've also, I was told last week, they, they applied for a grant from Interstate Sign to get more signs for us. We are, as of this afternoon, we are up to seventy signs in town. We made twenty more today. The men and women of Oxford Fire and EMS are making them. They're like Santa's little helpers. And, and they're very excited about it. They, they've gone to a couple calls where the signs have actually come into use, and, and they, they like it. Just in this meeting alone, I've received four emails for, for more requests of signs. We are not making any money off of the signs. We are making the, the payment. So for the post and the sign, it's sixteen dollars. For just the sign, it's twelve. And all that does is pay off the bill for the signs. The town is not making any money. And we have been putting them up pretty much daily. The town of Charlton has also adopted it. Southbridge has adopted it. Auburn has adopted it. And Munson has also adopted it. So that was kind of the easy sell for me, because Munson had already had it, and the chief knew about it, so he was on board. But it's, it's booming, and, and we're, we're, we're making them as fast as we can.
Fantastic.
How do the residents go about requesting the signs?
So you can, you can go to the town's website and go to the fire department, and you can request it right online. You can pay it online. You don't have to, you don't even have to come to the station. The email comes directly to me with the proof of payment, and then we make the sign. Or you can go down to headquarters and fill out a paper form. We have had some people that preferred to pay in cash, so we'll, we'll do it that way, too.
And then you go out at your earliest convenience and place the signs?
Yes, I go out. Basically, what I've been doing is in between inspections and emergency calls, I'll go out and put up signs.
Awesome. That's great.
How will pricing change with the donated posts? Since you're charging for posts, but Home Depot just donated a hundred of them.
So the pricing doesn't change, because the signs themselves are sixteen bucks. So we're not, we're, we're not, it's, the, the donation was nice, because we didn't have to spend any more money upfront. If, if the pricing, if the grant goes through from Home Depot, then pricing will change. We will, I, I don't want to say we'll do them for nothing, but we'll have to see what, what the town wants to do with that at that point in time, if the grant goes through.
Very good. Thanks, Ken, for coming in and showing us that.
You're welcome.
So people know what they're looking at. They see them around.
Have a good night. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy. Appreciate that. The next item is the John G. Sad Memorial. I wanted the board to know that after our last meeting, I had been approached by the Sad family regarding their desire to seek to have the existing John G. Sad Veterans Memorial at the junction of Main and Lester Street modified or replaced in order to have Selectman John G. Sad recognized alongside with his father at the existing site. The original memorial was placed many years ago after petitioning the Commonwealth, because it resided in the, the actual state right of way. We had started to research that. I know Jared, and I've gone out and taken these pictures late last week. You know, Jared had looked into the state right away, because the, the road has changed a bit since modifications have been done since this monument had been placed years ago. And it does still remain in the state right of way. And the District Highway Office had been in touch with our DPW Director and had indicated that, in their opinion, even though the memorial remains in the right way, we would, the Sad family in the town would not have to re-petition to place another monument there, even if it was a new monument in recognition of, of both of these fine servants and military veterans. And so, having said that, they've only asked that we make sure that when the work is done, that we just notify the District Office. So the family really thought they were going to have to do that. I spoke with Jay Bose, you know, extensively about this desire, and so I think they're relieved to hear that. They also had requested that they have an opportunity to come and talk about potentially what they would like to do there. And they also had requested me to kind of link them up with the gentleman who has been refurbishing veterans monuments in town, Frank from Colonial Stone, in which we've making that connection. So hopefully, through the chairman's ability to perhaps put them on, on the, the next meeting, they would like to appear before the board, even though it is in the state's right of way, and that's where the decision would lie. I think they want to inform the community about what they're hoping to do, which I think is wonderful. So I just wanted to make sure the board was aware of that and that hopefully, in discussions with the chairman, we'll be able to get it also on the next agenda. The next item is, after having a very productive department head meeting late last week, we are starting to refocus our energies on fully reopening our programs. And Laura Wilson, Senior Senate Director, did want me to share this, because it's the first real bus trip that's going to be taking place for our seniors. And they need to have some advanced planning for this. And the first one is a bus trip that will go to New Hampshire. It's called the Turkey Train Ride. It's going to be Wednesday, October 13th, and it includes a foliage, foliage train ride and also a turkey dinner and a bus trip. And the second trip is going to be the Newport Playhouse in Cabaret Restaurant in Rhode Island to see A Christmas for Carol on Wednesday, December 1st. I only want to put that out, because they're filling up fast, and a lot of seniors have been eager to try to get out to do something. And this is one of those opportunities. So I told Laura we'd make sure we advertise it, and I'm sure the Selectmen, through all of their community outreach, will be able to tell and encourage people to go. And you don't have to be a senior to go, but we'd like our seniors to be able to go as much as possible. The last item I have is Movies on Main. As you know, as part of our master planning strategic goal of bringing more people downtown, I had, prior to the pandemic, launched the Movies on Main Initiative, just to see how a series for films outside would work as a cultural initiative. And it was extremely well received that year, even though we had a lot of triple E and some weather issues. But last year, we couldn't do it at all because of the pandemic. So this year, we are, and on tap for this week, we are really, truly opening it. And it will start on this coming Wednesday, tomorrow. And the movie is Jumanji: The Next Level with Dwayne Johnson, The Rock. So bring your blanket and your actual chair and come out and see a wonderful movie. And as you can see from your packets, we have a whole lineup, and they include the movies for every single Wednesday, all the way to September, where we'll close it out with a double feature. We have Shazam, Guardians of the Galaxy 2, Maleficent. And we're going to close the season with Do Little and Remember the Titans to bring on the football season. So we know that people are eager to enjoy the beautiful common we have. And, you know, part of our job is to provide some opportunities to bring these cultural initiatives. And that would conclude my report, Mr. Chairman. And because I've been, I had some technical difficulties coming on, I was going to say I, I will, I'll let you guys conclude the rest of the meeting, which I know you're quite capable of doing your announcements, and I'll check in afterwards to hear them, okay?
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right, that's the manager's report. We get to Selectman's announcements. Selectman Triano.
The only thing that I had was that I happened to notice that Jared was still here. A couple months back, I had put a little bit of extra work on your plate, and I apologize for doing it regarding the mailboxes at the north end of Main Street. I wanted to thank you for all the work that you've been putting in behind the scenes on that. I drove through the other day, and it looked like some of the mailboxes have been moved. I don't know if that was coincidence, or I have a funny feeling it's related to the hard work that you've been putting into it. If, Mr. Chair, I could just put him on the spot for a minute about it. I didn't realize it was going to be such a headache for you, and I apologize for that. It was just-
Not at all. Happy to do it. It, so I, I started, when you had, we talked about that. I reached out to the state, basically, you know, next day, that being state right of way through there. It, it's, it's a little funny that, you know, we plow that section of sidewalk. That's always been this unspoken agreement, right? It's, it's state right of way, state facility, but we maintain it, plowing it and clearing snow, but that's really it. Maintenance beyond that is really, it's borne on the state. So I expressed that to them. I got circulated around to a few different folks. I ended up talking with the district maintenance engineer and some of the local DOT folks and kind of pressed them on it and had them, you know, put a letter together and, and reach out to the residents and really push the matter and, and stress that this is, you know, it, it's, it's an issue for ADA accessibility, obviously. Even if just someone able-bodied wants to enjoy that sidewalk, use that sidewalk, you can't, because it's completely obstructed. So it's still, it's moving along slowly. I'm not seeing the progress that I would have liked, but I'm, you know, more than willing and will circle back with DOT to see what additional efforts we can make there. You know, it's, it's, I wish it was as simple as just going out there and removing that obstruction, but then obviously, people are going to be, their, their mail delivery would be impeded. So we'll keep plugging away at it.
But I appreciate it, because I didn't realize it was going to be such a headache. But I had had a few residents complain to me regarding their ability to get their walker down the sidewalk when they were trying to walk to Walmart. And I noticed, well, that is, you know, kind of a big deal with ADA rules and everything like that. So I very much appreciate all of your hard work on it. It has not gone unnoticed.
Happy to do so. You're welcome.
Thank you. And that's all I have tonight.
Thanks, Sharon. Thank you. Selectman LeBlanc.
I have nothing tonight.
All right, Selectman Daniels, welcome back.
Thank you, thank you. I, I don't have a whole lot. The only thing I really kind of want to touch base on, I didn't get a chance to speak while they were up here, but in regards to the MVP grant, I just think it's great and wonderful to see different boards, different departments working together to continue to bring in grant money into this town. Same thing with the fire department and working with local businesses, and the local businesses willing to apply for grant money, to just bring additional money into this town to continuously make improvements to this town. I know over the last couple of years, there have been hundreds of thousands of dollars. If, I'm, I'm pretty sure we're well over a million, if not a couple million dollars worth of grant money that's brought into this town to just continue to improve the beautification of the town, the success of the town with local businesses, small businesses, and just make it a better community overall for the residents of Oxford. So thank you for all the hard work that the different departments are putting in. That's, that's all I have for the evening.
Great, thank you, thank you. Well, I have nothing myself, so. I am going to, I'm going to ask for a motion to go into executive session pursuant to Master General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A7. Section seven, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant in aid requirements. Purpose seven, the open meeting law, General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 22FG. Review of executive session minutes for consideration of release pursuant to the public records request. And I'm asking for that motion. And if we go into executive session, we will only come out of executive session for the purpose of adjournment.
Make that motion. Second?
We have a motion and a second to go into executive session. I will call for a vote.
Yes.
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 And I'll vote yes. Four in affirmative, one absent. We thank you for coming. We are in executive session.